Okay, we'll call this meeting to an end. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, considering the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
That's the most amens we've had in a long time. We move on. Roll call, please.
Allen, here. Green, here. LaFleur, here. Ms. Stravich, here. Rhindell, here. Ricks, here. Warren, here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes of the City Council meeting of March 7th. Motion be in order?
Make the motion.
Support.
What's been made in support? Is there any discussion on the minutes? Be in that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. I think everybody's pretty much here for the same thing. If you're not, then I would ask that you would come to the podium, state your name, and your address to the clerk for the record. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on any non-agenda items? I didn't think so. Okay, we'll move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
No.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made in support? Any discussion? Be in that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made? Supported, there is no discussion on the consent agenda motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have items for consideration. We have 10 this evening. The first one being consideration of approving Resolution Number 2022-2, recognition of the competitive cheer state championship team. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider adoption of Resolution 2022-2, a resolution recognizing the 2022 state champion Richmond High School competitive cheer team. The 2022 state championship is the seventh state championship for the Richmond Blue Devil competitive cheer team, and Coach Kelly and the team are here tonight, I believe, for you.
Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-2, a resolution recognizing the 2022 state champion Richmond High School competitive cheer team as a source of civic pride.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Coach? Now, the way this works, we made a motion. Now, it has come back to the table after any discussion, and it either passes or it doesn't pass. So, we're not done, but Kelly knows darn well. The fourth time around, this is one more to put on your wall or in the case, and I'd like to read that. A resolution recognizing the 2022 state champion Richmond High School competitive cheer team. And this one's, this is the fourth one.
Fourth in a row.
In a row, yes. And this is probably the best one that the administration has put together, I believe, because everything that I'm going to read is very, very true. Whereas, the Richmond High School competitive cheer team won the state of Michigan Division III competitive cheer championship for 2022, and whereas, this fourth consecutive state championship marks the first four-peat in school history, and seventh state championship won by the Blue Devil competitive cheer team. And whereas, Coach Kelly Mathis, her assistant coaches, and the student athletes have created a dominant program that has brought considerable pride in our community, and whereas, our city is proud of the Blue Devil competitive cheer team and appreciative of the state recognition that the team has brought to this community through their good sportsmanship and athletic success. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Richmond City Council does hereby recognize and congratulate the Richmond High School competitive cheer team and their Coach Kelly Mathis for their dedication and diligence to the sport of high school competitive cheer and for winning the 2022 state championship. Congratulations, on behalf of the city.
I promise I won't be long-winded, girls. Obviously, I cannot thank the community enough, the City Council, the administration, the parents, the kids, everybody involved. To win a state championship is something that you never forget, but to win four in a row is something that we will hold on to forever, and maybe there'll be another one and maybe there won't be, but at this point, they, these girls not only made history within our program, but they made history within the school. As Mr. Rick said, it's the first school team that has ever won a four-peat state championship. So, we are super proud of that and super excited. It is an honor to be part of this community and to represent the city and the town and the school year after year, to go out there and wear those letters on their chest and do what we do. I could not be any prouder of them and their parents and our program, and I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Very briefly, which is tough when you put a microphone in front of the mayor. It's, it's something that, a state championship is something that nobody can ever take away from you, and it's something that you will carry with you for the rest of your life. You were the best at what you did at one time, and it will, I swear to you, it will carry you through the rest of your life. You know what it takes to be your very best, and the world's going to be better because of it for people like you that give everything to be the very best. So, again, congratulations from our, the entire city of Richmond. Thank you. Now, you can leave, or you can stay for nine more things. Probably bore you to death.
Give an opportunity.
Thanks for coming.
Hi, congratulations.
Right?
Yeah.
Probably wasn't anybody else.
That's Jamie.
I know. It's okay. Oh, Drew Stan.
Was there any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay. Item number two, consideration of the confirmation of the police chief. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider confirming the City Manager's appointment to the Chief of Police slash Public Safety Coordinator position in accordance with Section 7.3A of the City Charter. The City Manager formed a Police Chief Selection Committee on January 31st of this year, and we reviewed 11 applications, interviewed four of the finalists, and I can say that it was a unanimous decision by the committee that was made up of two council members, our public service director, a member of the Police Department, and myself, and we hope that you confirm our appointment of Thomas Costello. Mr. Costello worked for the City of Centerline for many years, ultimately serving as Lieutenant of Police Services, and after that, he also worked for Harper Woods for several years.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve and confirm the City Manager's appointment of Thomas J. Costello to the position of Police Chief slash Public Safety Coordinator in accordance with Section 7.3A of the City Charter for indefinite term to serve at the pleasure of the City Manager.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? As John stated, we did a very, very thorough interview process with the top four. I think all 11 were very good candidates, but we did get it down to the four, and as John stated already, we're happy to say that all five of us found this gentleman going to be that perfect fit for the city of Richmond. I'm, I mean, excited, I think we all were excited after we interviewed Tom, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a great relationship, I'm sure. He's a solid guy. He lived here in Richmond for a while. He knows what the community's about, and he's got all the experience in the world, and really, really looking forward to Tom doing this. Any other comments at this point?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the committee for serving it. It was a lot of extra time that you guys took away, you know, from what you guys do on a regular basis, and it's not during the regular City Council meetings, and so I just thank you for serving and really diligently researching and looking through all those applications.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and as being a member of that committee, honored to serve on that committee, and I 100%, 110% sure we, we nailed it on this one, and very excited to get this process moving.
Mr. Tom?
Sir?
Do you have any comments, sir?
I'm very welcome to be here, very excited to be here. I want to thank you and the rest of the City Council and the Hiring Committee. I also want to recognize somebody who's not here, is Chief Teskey. Thank him for trailblazing the way, but I'm just excited to go.
Great.
Thank you very much for the kind words.
You bet. Is there any other audience that wants to speak to this? We'll give you up to three minutes. No, you don't want to come up and talk?
I had a chance to spend some-
Microphone, sir.
Oh, boy.
Here we go.
I can raise it up just a little bit.
Yeah.
I had a chance to spend some time with Chief Tom the other day, and I showed him around the department and introduced him to some of the people, and he rode around town, had a bite to eat at one of the local eateries, and I think that he's going to do a spectacular job as a chief, and we're all looking forward to it.
Good to hear, Bill. Good to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ray, you always got something to say, don't you?
I was eyeballing you earlier.
Good afternoon, everyone. Raymond Honan, retired fire chief, 1-846-0. We're near driving Macomb Township. Kathy and I are looking to move, so perhaps with the addition of, of the Public Safety Director, we'll entertain that. I've been doing this business, fire business if you will, in some fashion since 1977. The one thing I know that you know as well, ladies and gentlemen, that whatever the patch says, or whoever signs your check, whatever we do for a living, it's about a relationship first, and I absolutely agree with you, I will confess to you, and I am a chaplain, but I'm not wearing that hat at the moment, that I am very biased towards this man. I know this man, I know his heart. I've seen him at work, I've socialized with him off-duty. He is a man of great character, I think, and I don't know, obviously, ladies and gentlemen, the other candidates, but I think you got the right guy. And although I'm not a resident, I thank you for hiring him, because I know that he'll do you right. Tom will not do anything on-duty or off-duty to embarrass this organization, and I'm sure he will share that message with everybody that's already a member of Richmond Police Department of Richmond, Fire Department of Richmond, and EMS. I would also add that in this most challenging time of recruiting and retaining first responders, I think Tom's personal and professional brand may help you narrow that gap to find good candidates. So, thank you for what you do as well. It's been many years since I stood in front of a, of a City Council or Township Board. It does my heart good to stand before you. I really share that. I was so encouraged today, not just by, by this, but by the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. God bless you all. All the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hey, is there any questions of the candidate? You've got enough questions, Fire Chief.
I'm ready to go.
You were well informed.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, guys.
And if we can have a moment, we will have our city clerk do the oath of office.
If you want to raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution-
-of the United States-
Of the United States-
-and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state-
-and that I will faithfully perform-
And that I will faithfully perform-
-the duties of the office-
The duties of the office-
-of Chief of Police and Public Safety Coordinator-
Chief of Police and Public Safety Coordinator-
-in and for the city of Richmond-
In and for the city of Richmond-
-counties of Macomb and St. Clair-
Counties of Macomb and St. Clair-
-and state of Michigan-
And state of Michigan-
-according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number three is consideration of special event activity, Mobile Food Vendors Starcraft Brewery LLC. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request for mobile food vendors from Starcraft Brewery to have mobile food vendors on the following dates and times. Friday, April 8th, from 5:00 to 11:00. Saturday, April 16th, from 2:00 to 10:00. Friday, April 22nd, from 5:00 to 8:00. And Saturday, April 23rd, from 2:00 to 10:00. All other particulars are the same as their requests from February and March.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event request for mobile food vendors from Starcraft Brewery to have a mobile food vendor on the following schedule. Friday, April 8th, 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., Outlog Smoke Barbecue. Saturday, April 16th, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Scalisi Woodfire Pizza. Friday, April 22nd, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Bubba's Barbecue. And Saturday, April 23rd, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Great Lakes Smokehouse.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Again, we'll be voting no against this. I don't appreciate these mobile vendors in our downtown especially. Any other comments?
I was just wondering, has there been any issues with the crowds that have been there, or anything, anything's changed?
My concern is, it just seems that the way that they're using, and I understand they're following the rules they're implementing, but maybe it wasn't the spirit of the special event that we created and put a ton of time into doing by having these. And I don't, and like I said, I know they're following the, the letter of the law, but maybe it's something that council, we look at one of our roundtables, because the, the multiple dates they do, and I brought up the last meeting that we voted, it just, to me, it just takes away, this is not a special event. This is something I have to talk about, and just maybe clean up some language or something like that, and, you know, to that effect.
We can certainly, administration can certainly bring it back to a future roundtable meeting. As you know, our next one will be a budget workshop.
Right, right.
The next true roundtable would be July, but-
Yeah, and that would be fine, too. I'd just like to open up discussion on it, and make sure, maybe make sure we're, we're keeping with the spirit of the special event.
Sure.
I mean, we put a lot of time into creating that, and I'm not saying that they're doing anything wrong by doing these requests, but-
Nope. Okay. Anything else? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does, uh, nay. I'm sorry. Nay. Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of special event request, Rags Festival of Fibers. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, the City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Area Historical and Genealogical Society to hold their first festival of fibers, scheduled for Saturday, July 23rd, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, July 24th, from 10 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is a new event. Rags would like to close, as part of the event, they would like to close Park Street from Stone, Stone Street to Beebe Street, beginning Friday, July 22nd at 4:00 p.m. until Sunday evening, to allow for the setup and tear-down, and for the visitors to gather. There will be three main areas of focus for the event, demonstration and education area, hands-on kids' craft, and a fiber vendor artist sale. And Audrey Gutzinger is here tonight, along with, I'm sorry, I missed the other person. Thank you. They're both here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Can we have a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Rags special event request for the Festival of Fibers on July 23rd from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, July 24th, from 10 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., along with the closure of Park Street from Stone to Beebe Street for both days.
Support.
What's been made and supported? We're to you. Do you have comments that you would like to make about what's going on, what the request is all about?
Well, we, let's put it this way, we just decided that we were in with the Heritage Festival. It was the first time we met each other, and one conversation led to the next, and it turns out that there seems to be an interest. There's a lot of us that, I'm a weaver, she's a spinner, and, you know, we have a lot of four-age kids, we have sheep, we have wool, we have a mixture of different things, and so the, we said, why don't we show people how this was done in the past and how it's being done in the, you know, today? And you know what? There's a lot of history our young kids don't know. So, this is a great way, we think. We're going to try and see if we can't teach them some of that. We know several vendors. I asked a couple of them what they would like to see done, and they were, they're excited to be over in this area, because most of the fiber shows are actually north of us and our area, so they're excited to be in our area, looking forward to it.
Good, good. Audrey, any comments? You're not here to get something, because usually when your family comes, they always want something.
That's later in the agenda.
Oh, is that later in the agenda? That's right, that's right.
I will say, I appreciate that my husband is worst in the process. It means a lot less stressful for me, so I appreciate it.
Very good. Is there any questions council has of the two?
Excited.
No, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. Any comments? Any audience comments from any of you guys? Have anything to say about this? No? You're looking forward to it, aren't you? Yeah, yeah. All right, back to the table. Any other comments, council? We wish you good luck. The only question I have, Mr. City Manager, is second paragraph, it says that they would like to close Park Street on Friday, and the motion is only for Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, I had written down. I apologize, that we should probably extend that motion to say, comma, beginning Friday, July 22nd at 4:00 p.m.
Dennis, you have any problem with that? You made the original motion.
I'm good with that.
Okay, very good. So, that will include Friday. Anything else, council? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number five is consideration of the odd parking lot reconstruction.
Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider approving a change order to the Seymour Street, Street Improvement Contract to add work at the odd to reconstruct the parking lot at the facility. Recently, administration discussed with council approaching the two low bidders for the Seymour and Burke Drive Street projects to see if they would give us a quote to do a change order to one of their projects. The low bidder on providing that quote was Teltow Contracting from the Seymour Street Project in the amount of $161,027.75. Based on the amount of money in the current budget that Tifa already has, is, we are asking that the General Fund and Tifa split the cost of that, and so our motion is to do that, and then a change order. But based on these, both these contractors being the low bidder, it allows us to add this work and save on the costs of bidding and creating those bidding documents time-wise. We're hoping that this will be done at the same time Seymour Street is, so it'll be done this fiscal year project versus next fiscal year.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Teltow Contracting Change Order 1 to Seymour Street Project to include the odd parking improvements in the amount of $161,027.75, with the General Fund contributing $80,513.88, and request Tifa to authorize $80,513.87.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? It's nice to see that we are in a position that we can afford to do this as a add-on project and get the good competitive bid pricing, and it definitely needs it. That parking lot is very, very bad.
And both contractors have done a lot of work for us, so we're very confident in their ability to, to work with us to get this done.
Great.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So, as part of this, then, we're taking on that second page of the map, that little building down then, too, and then paving over that?
We'll be looking at that. It's our intent, we hope, to be able to do that, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, council? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table?
You're not even answering my question.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. Back to the, the table here. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion to move funds.
I make a motion to amend the General Fund Budget to increase line item 101-462-818.024, General Fund Capital Improvements, Contractual Services, Odd Project from $0 to $80,514.
Support.
Made and support. Any discussion on this? Any audience comment on this? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number six is consideration of bid award, 2022 Aggregate Materials Supply Contract. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2022 Aggregate Material Contract. The contract is for the purchase and delivery of 21 AA limestone and M-class 3 sand to the DPW yard on an as-needed basis. RG Eisenhardt submitted the low bid for the contract, and our Public Service Director, Jim Gutzinger, is here tonight to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2022 Aggregate Materials Supply Contract to RG Eisenhardt at the unit prices of $17.60 per ton for 21 AA limestone and $7 per ton for M-class 3 sand.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this item? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table? No comments, Jim?
None.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. It's where we talked about, it's going to be everything for your husband. Here we go. There we go. See a smile on his face? Item number seven, consideration of wastewater treatment plant air conditioning replacement. Mr. City Manager?
On May 19th, 2021, Richmond wastewater treatment, air conditioning was not working properly. The cause was determined to be a condenser. In September 2021, the Richmond City Council authorized Watson Brothers to replace, to proceed with the replacement of a condenser and the evaporator in the amount of $14,565. Unfortunately, since then, they have been unresponsive to many attempts by our Public Service Director to get them to come out and complete the work, so we're asking, so we have notified them that they are no longer needed, and we are asking council to authorize Tony's Heating and Cooling to replace the condenser and evaporator on the wastewater treatment plant air conditioning system.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the expense of $18,025 to Tony's Heating and Cooling for the replacement of the wastewater treatment plant AC, condenser, and evaporator with the expense charged to the appropriate line item within the wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement fund.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this? It's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Yeah. So, we have no recourse. Okay. Was there more than two bidders on this?
Uh, three.
There was a third one?
Correct.
And was he anywhere near what?
Uh, no. He was quite a bit higher than the second bidder.
Okay.
And Tony's Heating and Cooling was the second low bidder.
Okay. So, it's quite a bit more. Could that be the reason why the first bidder?
It could be. They have never confirmed that. I have spoken with them. It's odd, it's not like I just left voicemails. They said, well, let me look into that, and we'll call you back. And then they would never call me back, and it's happened multiple times. And the wastewater plant operator made calls as well, so it was very interesting.
And I will say that we have them do work at our, at this facility.
Yeah.
And we're starting to run into some of the, some similar problems. I don't know if they've overextended themselves. So, certainly, it could be the, how low their bid was, but we're having some other issues when that's not a factor.
Okay. I'm probably asking the same question again, but I forgot the answer, Jim. The way it's worded, the condenser and the evaporator, does this mean that they're replacing the entire unit?
That's correct.
Okay, because there's a lot more than just the evaporator and the condenser. You got a compressor.
I apologize. I'm simplifying it, yeah. So, the indoor and the outdoor.
Okay, okay. All right. I think I asked that.
The last time around, yeah.
That's what I did. Wasn't sure. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Number eight, consideration of the purchase of the wastewater treatment plant oxidation ditch rotor blade replacement. Mr. City Manager?
The 2022-23 budget includes, hopes to include funding for the replacement of the oxidation ditch rotor tube paddles. We found that they were starting to wear, and then unexpectedly, quite a few of them let go. The concern is that we have quite a lead time on getting the materials out here, so even though it was a proposed item in the next budget, where we, we do have the funds in the sewer fund to handle the project, so we're hoping that council will approve it tonight, just so that we can get them ordered and get them on their way. Anything to add to that, Jim?
No, except that there are, just to clarify, there are two oxidation ditches, and that this issue puts the one ditch out of service, so it prevents redundancy that's necessary for the plan.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements due to section 64-53A and authorize the expense of $43,200 for the purchase of 864 Magna rotor blades from DuBois Copper Cooper, I guess it is, with the expense charged appropriate line item within the wastewater treatment equipment replacement fund.
Support. It's been made and supported. Any further discussion on this item? Did it seem like something got in there hard that busted those blades?
No, really, it's partially age, I'm sure, and my suspicion is, once one goes, it puts more pressure on the others, and the kind of price spirals from there.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? Yes, yeah. Any comments? Back to the table. Roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
Lafore?
Yes.
Mistrovich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Item number nine, consideration of the purchase of wastewater treatment plant oxidation ditch rotor bearing replacement. You know, even your line item, you know, just everything you do is, you know, yeah, yeah. You need to counsel him on.
I know. Yeah. Each of these assemblies has two bearings. The drive-in bearing requires special tools and experience to replace. Jim has done a nice job of putting together the various components of this project, which all add up to $8,000, but each individual component that they received quotes on were, was less than $5,000, so no individual component of it. And it's all unique kind of items or expertise, so you can't really bid it together. You have to do it the way Jim did it. So, although it adds up to more than eight, we are requesting that you authorize these three contractors to go for, do the work for this project.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenses of $8,553 from Applied Technologies Process Piping and Tiejar Incorp to rebuild the drive and bearings on the north oxidation ditch, with expenses charged with appropriate line items sanitary sewer fund.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion? Anything to add to this?
Just clarifying that this is the other, the second ditch. It's different from the one with the blades that we previously discussed.
Any comment from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Was there anything else while you were here?
Well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. Item number 10, consideration of special event request, Tootsie Rolls Sale Richmond Knights of Columbus. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to consider the request received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their annual Tootsie Rolls Sale on Friday, April 8th, and Saturday, April 9th. And the Knights have agreed to sign the liability waiver and to stay out of the intersection on Friday.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their Tootsie Rolls Sale at the intersections of Main Division and County Line Road, St. Clair Highway, city side on Friday, April 8th, and Saturday, April 9th, 2022, from dawn to dusk, that the Knights of Columbus agree not to be in the Main Division intersection on Friday, April 8th, from 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. And further, that the Knights of Columbus agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support. It's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Any audience comments? Any audience from comments? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them good weather. Miss latest manager from the city manager, sir?
Tomorrow, City Hall will be closed from 9:00 to noon for in-service training. The PD window will stay open, and other office, city offices will all be open. It'll just be City Hall for some training.
Very good. Moving on. Council comments. Dennis?
Nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Yeah?
I would just like to thank council for the opportunity to go to the MML last week. Jamie and I both attended, and it was very informative and educational.
Good. John?
Nothing.
No.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. I have some announcements. Jigsaw Puzzle Sale is this Saturday, March 26th. Starts at 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. The library will be having an Easter wreath craft event on Wednesday, March 30th, at 6:30 p.m. Again, spots are limited, so call library for pre-register, 727-2665. City Richmond Recreation Department will have the annual Easter egg scramble on Saturday, April 9th, at Bebe Street Park. It begins at 10:30, and when Margot says it starts at 10:30, it literally starts at 10:30. They don't wait for anybody, because the Easter bunny is in a big hurry that day to get around to every place. So, there's age groups 3 to 4, 5 to 6, and 7 to 10. Bring your own basket. There'll be a special treat for 2 and unders, and it's limited to the first 60. The Easter bunny will be in the community center afterwards, where you can take your own pictures, or there will be instant digital pictures available for purchase. And in case of bad weather, they will be outside if it's light rain or snow. They say, please dress appropriately for weather and ground conditions. If weather is severe, then visit the bunny in the community center and get your fill of eggs. So, one way or the other, April 9th at 10:30, the Easter bunny is going to be here in town. Hooks and Needles Knit and Crochet Group. This is something new. It's every second and fourth Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Again, for more answers to any questions you might have, 727-2665. It's, if you like to knit or crochet is what this one's all about. That's nice. And again, if you're looking for a fish dinner, the Richmond VFW on 32 Mile Road, just west of town, every Friday during Lent, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. It's $10 or you can eat, and it's eat-in or carry-out. And the carry-outs, you need to go to the VFW to get a carry-out. There is no phone orders there. Clarified that with the commander this morning. Today being the 21st, we do have a Tifa meeting on the 23rd at 7 o'clock here at City Hall. And that takes us into April already. And our next regular scheduled city council meeting is at 7 o'clock right here on April 4th, which is the first Monday. The other thing, the first day of yard waste that everybody is waiting for, the waste collection will be done on the 5th, April 5th. That's also spring break weekend, or week, I should say. Richmond schools are closed for spring break, April 4th through the 8th. And I believe that is it at this time. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar, or anything else that's going on right at the moment? If not, we do have a closed session. We need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with section 8(c) of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Pub. Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement as requested by administration.
Support. It's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, roll call, please.
Lafore?
Yes.